So, I was looking at the last minutes. Here they are. So, I made it. Thank you very much for the call. Could have been five minutes earlier.
Fair.
So, Chairman, and I got to see you next. Thank you, guys.
You can just ask the clerk to take the roll call, and she'll do that for you.
Who's at that?
Oh, yes.
Please do.
Done.
Here.
Oxon, Othrum.
Here.
Richardson.
Thomas.
Here.
Voila.
There you go.
Looks like we're here. And Matt's here. And are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There's a few things I wanted to add, just notes more than anything, before we got started, if that's okay with you, Chair. First, I wanted to introduce our new Commissioner. This is Mr. Withrow. This is his first time with our Parks Commission, and I just wanted to extend a nice warm welcome to him. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Next, I wanted to give one small update to the actual... He's working on it. Here we go. You can see in this image here, there is a concrete pad near the entryway of that park that has been removed as of today. That wasn't necessarily for the park, but there is a member of the public, a gentleman right over here, that needed to strengthen up his slope behind his house with some rip wraps and big rocks, and the contractor needed a way to get back there, and we granted him access through our park. And so, you might see large trucks going through there soon with big rocks. It is not the beginning of the construction of this park at all. It's just that gentleman trying to shore up his slope, and he couldn't get the truck through there without the concrete pad removed, and we were all together too happy to let him do that, and so, he got that done for us because it had to go at some point anyway. Just a small update on that. The last update I had was for the members of the public. This is a workshop between our Parks Commissioners, and there's really not an opportunity for the public to participate in that, but we're glad you're here, and you're absolutely welcome to listen in and see what direction these folks come up with. And that's all I had as far as changes to the agenda are concerned.
Thank you. And the minutes were sent out to everybody, and I... Did everybody get them? Did anybody need a copy? And I read through them, and they seemed accurate. And is there any discussion on the minutes?
Not? You can call for a vote to approve them.
Okay. Well, is all in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Well, traditionally, we have somebody make a motion to accept the minutes, as my clerk was about to fall out of her chair, so if anybody wants to make a motion to adopt those minutes, she'd probably like that a whole lot more.
Yes. That would be better.
I'm with Oxon. And I support him.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Now, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Then let's move on.
Okay.
Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Then I think we can proceed with our new business, and Matt, are you going to kind of get us involved with that?
I was just going to kick things off. We have our consultants here from AKS. This is Kirsty, and she's going to be working with us tonight to walk us through the results of the survey that we had with the public. It's working on it. There you go. Sorry.
That's the finished product?
That's what the park's going to look like. That's our plan.
Right in the middle of your...
It's going to be a lot of earthwork.
We might have to do that.
That's the big rocks that were coming in?
That's right.
Let's try this again.
Sorry, that was my fault. I bounced it because I switched over to my screen.
Well, thank you all for having us here. As Matt mentioned, my name is Kirsty Haswell. I'm Senior Landscape Architect with AKS Engineering, and this is my colleague Nancy Pierce. We've worked on a lot of parks together. So, this is a little different than a lot of maybe presentations that you guys have We got a really good response to that, and then kind of break out into a workshop, and have some interaction with you guys. I hope it's fun for you as well. We've got an existing conditions map there and some different elements based on what we heard from the survey, so we can play around with how those might work on site. So, I hope that'll be fun for you guys. Um, so, we did a targeted outreach survey. An area that you see on the plan is where we kind of sent out mailers to. There was about 500 that went out, and we got 126 back, which is a really great return. That's 25%. And frankly, I've seen a lot less in bigger communities, so I, I was really pleased with the results of that. There was four main questions that we asked, just to kind of gauge what people want to see in their park. The first question was just to kind of find out what age demographics we were dealing with. And as you can see here, we have quite a few under the 18 age bracket, kind of spike again around the 45 to 54, and then some seniors in the 65 or plus. And so, what I get from this is that we have kind of a nice mix of families with children as well as some seniors. Second question was asking what people value when they think about parks and facilities in this community. So, the blue colors, you can see towards the bottom, those are items that people ranked as a high-value item, and then kind of the pink-purple tones are rated a little less high on the scale. So, you can see from, from this graph here, things like the natural areas, children's playground, where it says amenities and facilities, that was really geared more towards accessible inclusive amenities. Open grassed areas and pedestrian bicycle trails were some of the highest ranking things. Things like act, active sports and community gatherings ranked lower. Third question was, what do people do when they go to a park? And it was nice to see some continuity from the first question here. You saw some passive recreation type things, like walking was highest ranked there, enjoying nature, socializing, and then we had a tie between picnicking and play. In case you're wondering, the little yellow is because some people chose to not answer that question, so didn't get quite 100% response rate on that one, so. And then the last question was actually split between two sides because it was quite a long list. We asked people to, again, rank, rank different amenities based on how they use the parks, what impacts it might have to the surrounding community, like noise and, you know, light spill over, those types of things. So, the dark blue is things that were ranked very important, the light blue were ranked as not that important. So, on this slide, the high-ranking items were the restrooms, the playground, walking trails, and shelters. And then as a continuation, other high-ranking items included trees and landscaping, so that natural environment, seating in a drinking fountain. As you can see here, some of the more active sports, like basketball court, pickleball, that sort of thing did not rank very high on what people wanted to see in this park. Um, so, with that, that was the four questions that we asked, and we also gave people opportunity to provide their contact information so that we can keep them up to date on what's happening as we progress a little further through this process. So, I think with that, I'd like to move into just a kind of a design charrette with you guys. Something else I wanted to bring up, we've been looking at the SCORP funding that might be available as we move past the master planning, and what might, you know, make sense to be able to get grants and things to actually develop the park. So, I know a new one's coming out in 2024, but the current one ranks things like an aging population, diverse population, youth engagement, and outdoor recreation, serving low-income populations, and the health benefits of physical activity as high-ranking priorities for Oregon. And so, I think this dovetails really well with some of the amenities that we have spread out here, and I think this has a pretty good shot of, of meeting that criteria and being eligible for possible funding. That being said, if you don't mind gathering around the table, I also did want to thank the public that participated in this, and next step after we, we get through this, we'll be putting together a couple of concept plans in a more refined manner and doing a public open house so that the public does have opportunity to see, you know, a layout and have more opportunities to participate, so.
You have a plan? You have a plan on where you want us to break out to?
Wouldn't just stand up, but just kind of stand around the table.
Okay.
But maybe it's a little bit more fun, too. I don't know.
She has some cutouts of what could and couldn't be to help everybody get an understanding of how big those will really be on the site, and so, you can move them around and play with them, and give her an idea of what the next step is.
Yes, so we have things like this is what I have to...
Gotta do something, I guess. Just my first step getting into...
So, this would be miserable with probably that size of amenity. This is the dog park. And I'm not saying we have to do that. I just wanted to be prepared for... Yes, exactly. So, you could see what kind of area that would be. We've got a couple playground options, and again, this is just kind of a space holder. We've got some other fun amenities like bungee ball court or pool, um, different picnic places, shelters, and restrooms, bicycle racks. So, yeah, I guess a couple things to point out here, so this bold line is that kind of the area we have to work with. That's the outline of the property. Um, this, my grass rash represents wetland. Do you think this one may not actually be a wetland? But now it's on there, and then the blue is a wetland.
Sometimes just line my patients.
Yeah.
If you're passing around the... Radio, radio. I mean, we, we drive, uh...
So, does it flow all the way through here? Or is it open right there?
Oh, oh, okay.
This is the creek that I used to... So, I don't know. Kind of this is the worst-case scenario, if we can approach onto that, and we just have to like average it out in another area, so I know it does give that point of view of the choke of the park itself.
And just as we're fresher, this house is to remain, and we are trying to be very, very cognizant about mitigation to that as well. Their house. And so, that, that will stay, and we're around the entrances, kind of right next to them, and so, we're, we're going to try and, you know, buffer that with landscaping and fencing and things like that, and we're cognizant of what users might be up against that. Some of that might be something you think about, too, as you're moving the puzzle pieces around. Doesn't mean we can't put something next to it, but we just need to make sure if we do, that we're adequately...
Pickleball court in your backyard.
So...
We can think about, you know, off...
I'm just concerned where we can start. We should start first, I think, where we're gonna put the park. That's, that's, that's number...
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to come in that.
This is basically, not, this is basically is the only entrance.
On what part do you think that's... Not very good part.
No. Yeah, it's about 4.47 and a half acres. About four and a half. So, can we stay away from this line here? We could impact it. Um, just, so like if you come in 50 feet here, then we may have to come out 50 feet here to mitigate for it. Oh.
We gotta put parking first.
So, so how is that if you lived here? We can want the parking...
Roads all the way through it. It's a logistical thing.
You might be able to do something...
Parking may end up being a good use to have right next to this house because it doesn't mean screaming chola right there. It doesn't mean somebody's making a picnic right there and playing music right there. It's just kind of the in and out of vehicles. It might be a nice use to have right there as well, so.
And I think we could provide enough proper that maybe that point would...
Would there be lighting in them?
We're, we're, we're talking about that. There's, nothing's in concrete yet. That's, these folks are helping us get there.
The access to parking would probably be closed, would be, would be closed at that.
So, will the restrooms? If there's restrooms? We don't know that there will be restrooms. We're talking about it.
Yeah, you're gonna run sewer all the way. Is there a road?
Yes, yes.
Is there often a mile or two? Any lighting will be...
Like down here.
Maybe this is a lot of property. Yeah, for the other half. Not just a...
I don't know. It's like having a line up like this if we do it.
I think that would maybe have a, maybe you have a, it's like a roundabout or something.
Turn around.
Turn around.
You know, pretty much get right around.
That way, when you have it, it's kind of possible.
It's because of the fire protection round, but doing the... That would be a good...
But this trace paper is a great tool to help us dream, and you can mark it up and change our minds and see what it looks like. That's right.
We do want to provide some...
How wide is that entrance? What number? You probably...
I'm finding that information over here.
So, it's a longer way.
They stand or have an angle, if they had to turn around, it'd be back out.
If I remember correctly, there's kind of a, it's kind of a steep incline up to those houses. Yes.
The houses are... That entryway is about 60 feet. That entryway between the houses, that entrance to the park, is about 60 feet wide. Somebody was asking, and they sort it out.
This, I think current driveway, you bring, it's out here.
Little wide. Oh, if you weren't... I was thinking that.
They're closest.
There's a lot.
That will, um, park is almost...
I live in a far southeast...
Is there? Over there?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, see?
Oh, you did the, you did the rock.
The rocks?
No, my neighbor.
Okay.
My neighbor's putting in it. I live right there. The path's already out, the rocks are already on their...
Okay. You're pressing. You're fresher.
The other one that is driveway access. According to the survey, we have private access. So, it would be another entrance way on how...
Would you like...
She would like it.
But you live...
But I...
Yeah.
Because our property...
Their property.
It's like, because currently they have to go on.
Right.
We have this access easement, and then they go into our property, and then back onto your property to get there.
Yeah, right over there where she said that.
Yeah, that, if that works for you.
Can I add some, just from an engineering standpoint? We don't like to see driveways too close to each other, but it can be done. That's the only option, but if, if they were amenable to sharing an entrance and having a driveway, but that, that could be discussed. Maybe not, but...
Then you'd have to close the park entrance here. You would have to.
Probably here, probably. So, you guys want to be able to gate it off?
Yeah.
Closer than that?
If, if it was better, you know, that would be their preference on access. We'd work with them from a street standpoint, but, um, you know, it's kind of depends on how the house is already oriented and their garage is and those...
And I know there's a bit of retuning there, too.
Yeah.
So, we'll just put this as second. This will meet the first. We can look at that.
Yeah, the access is kind of a logistical thing as long as it's a parking. If I have to fight to enter because of people coming out of the park, it's infuriating.
Yeah.
I'll be transparent about that. It's infuriating if I'm waiting for somebody to get out of the park or they're parked in front of my access. I'm gonna have to go into the park, ask them to move, so access isn't a big...
Well, that might be a good reason to pull the spaces into the park instead of right there in the entryway, just throwing that out, too.
If the gate is accessed here and somebody, as do all parks, somebody's gonna try to access it after hours, they're gonna park like under my driveway, and it'll be the old creepy person telling them to get out of there.
Well, this could all come full. They might park where they should.
Yeah. I can stand there all day long.
So, maybe that comes a little bit more down here.
But if there's no other option, we can do that. It's just, we're just talking about, that's all.
So, maybe we do it a little further down, so it's not right...
So, then this would basically have to be all driveway.
Other problems, you're just burning space for roads, which minimal...
60 feet wide is a lot of space.
Yeah.
Wasn't your driveway down here?
Yeah, right next to that tree is technically your private access easement for us.
Right.
And then, yeah, it's... It's tough.
It's tough to get in there?
No, no, it's a tough to circumnavigate the current situation that we're navigating. It's a tough to find a perfect...
Do you see several driveways?
It's the problem, the distance between the two driveways or to the bridge area?
It's, it's, the road is considered a arterial or collector, depending on the specification you're using, but in our code, it's an arterial right now, which just says you don't want driveways. You want to reduce those conflicts. We have driveways on there.
Okay.
And when you would do something new, it was a shared driveway now, we wouldn't want to go to, you know, increase the number of driveways, but there's, there's always situations where you have to, you have to provide access. We, because they, you know, this is a separate parcel, and this is kind of a planning thing, too, so...
We would work on it.
If somebody has a parcel, and the only option is, you know, a driveway that's too close to somebody else's driveway, and they have no other access, then they still get a driveway that we don't say you can't access a lot, so we'd, we'd break that out.
Because I guess my question would be, is like, this space here, what's the width here?
So, that's 32 inches right there.
We're surprised, but probably about 30.
Oh, well, that's a lot of space.
Yes, I can tell you exactly.
It's, what a waste of your property.
It's 20 feet.
I guess I say your property, but really it's not, but, you know...
It's 20 feet. They're plenty of worlds in there.
Yeah, you got some good ones there, yeah.
I think we had a previous discussion about fixing those property lines.
Right, do this.
Yeah, so that, that becomes theirs.
Oh, oh, this would become theirs.
Oh, that makes sense.
Okay, so I was gonna say, what, what, what would we do with that?
Make it look nice.
Have to maintain it.
Right, it would just be...
It seems like it'd be better to...
Exactly. Give it to us... Logistically irrelevant to the park.
Weird parcel.
Yeah.
Strange things happen. You're talking about...
The first question I had when we spotted, I was like, what the hell is this?
I, I think it would be, the best situation would be for the homeowners to have private access, not a shared entry with the park, mostly for emergency situations, or, you know, like you were just talking about, you know, somebody comes in at night and wants to access the park, but, you know, they're not supposed to.
Well, and if he has two driveways, if he has one here and then a second one, it could turn into a turnaround, or just people...
Okay. Well, it hurts that.
Oh, I see, so, so...
Nothing. Yeah, nothing. No access here.
Two gates.
Yeah. No, you don't want a turnaround, then you got people coming through your yard.
Right. And is this your garage? There's a car there, so...
That's the concrete pad, yeah.
So, if you have an entrance here, you'd have to do that, but it still might be a better option.
Yeah. You just got all your electrical running from the telephone pole. I mean, that's minor compared to access.
Where does it go across this way?
Yeah, telephone pole's right on this corner.
So, you have overhead?
Yeah, overhead. No, it's under.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Oh, I see, so, so.
Nothing, yeah, nothing. No access here.
No, you don't want a turnaround, then you got people coming through your yard.
Right. And is this your garage? Here, there's a car there, so.
That's the concrete pad, yeah.
So if you have an entrance here, you'd have to do that, but it still might be a better option.
Yeah, you've just got all your electrical running from the telephone pole. I mean, that's minor compared to access.
Where does it go across this way?
Yeah, telephone pole's right on this corner.
So you have overhead?
No, it's under.
Oh, okay.
So, so far, parking will be here.
So we think we pull it back a little bit further in? I mean, this doesn't really feel like, I mean, I know it sounds wide, but once you have enough of two cars to get in and still provide some buffering for houses on both sides, doesn't feel like you can really provide any active use on that. It's going to be primarily a vehicle. Yeah.
We are gonna barely, with the width of this, you're barely gonna have, if you want to put a sidewalk back here for people to walk and then drive in and out.
Yeah, there is. Oh, there is? Oh, okay.
You should be able to see it from the area, I think. Yeah, it's sixty feet wide, but it should be enough for two-way traffic and a sidewalk.
You get more of an angle or.
Or bike path.
Yeah, I mean, after all, if you were building a shopping center, the aisleways would be twenty-eight feet wide. That's two-way. So sixty feet without parking should be more than enough.
How many parking spots do?
That's nine, so seven total, seven regular and two ADA.
We're required to have two. It's ten percent, isn't it?
Yes. So we could, if we don't feel like we want that much parking, if we want to say this is a neighborhood park that people are gonna bike to or just walk to primarily, we can reduce that. Or not reduce it, but two would be the other option.
Is there gonna be any access to the backside? From, from the backside? Doesn't look like it.
Well, let me sneak in here. We do have plans for a trail system along this route someday, but that's not part of this park project. So whatever we design should have the ability to open up to a potential trail that could be back there someday. Just, it's just something to keep in mind. But you're right, this will be the only entry point. These individual homeowners could put gates in the back of their fence to go into the park on their own and that's fine. We wouldn't have a problem with that. They might not want to either, because then people might try to go in those gates, but that's, it's a possibility, but that will be.
But that, that route would be not needed.
Right, exactly.
I just think that north, north, our, our big park has an access to both sides.
Yeah.
You know, and I use the south side every morning at six fifteen. With the dollar.
Yeah, this one, there isn't public access ways off those other streets to do that. Now in the future, like Matt said, would we get a trail system through there? It would be something.
Had we planned on this being a park, all those cul-de-sacs would have a little trail going in, but we weren't planning on this being a park. It just kind of happened.
Is there any standing water right now?
No.
I didn't think so.
Only in a flooding situation. It's enough if we had a, you know, heavy rain, running your flood.
Right, right.
What was that bike in ninety-six?
The road, well, the road was different. The, the bridge that's there now is culverts and so water backed up a lot differently. We have some old photos from then. I don't know that anything would show right there, but.
So I'm sure it was flooded.
A lot of stuff was underwashed.
Scott, you live right in that area, you remember?
Sorry.
Although you probably wanted to get home.
He's, he's a little ways from here.
You were, most of the employees were stuck at the station.
When it flooded in, oh, I wasn't here in ninety-six.
Were you? It's a long time ago.
Ninety-eight. Yeah, it was, yeah, it's, I was down at Phoenix. It flooded down there.
I don't think any of the houses, well, I know, sorry, none of those houses around here are flooded. They might have been on Little Island.
They sit up a bit taller than the park. For better or for worse, they sit up taller. Oh, sorry, I said old ones.
Yeah, the subdivision was.
Yeah, subdivision would never be a problem.
That's a good point, though. I mean, you guys live around the park, you like being seen, considering it's like a little bit more active? Or should we try to find some more buffering?
No, it's nice to have a view. I mean, the Crooks Creek kind of serves as a wildlife corridor. We see deer coming through here. We actually see deer in the park area. There's, I've seen raccoons, possums, eagles, owls. So it'd be nice to not tear out as much as, block it off as much as possible.
Unfortunately, we don't want that.
Looks like parking is, so that, that is the park.
Yes, if we're good with that number, or we could reduce it to, if you.
I still think with, with the, with the access to this, because there's not walking paths to it.
Yeah, we could.
Especially because if you don't have a parking, they're gonna park in the neighborhoods and that's really gonna cause problems.
I look up at the survey, vehicle parking was extremely high.
Sure, sure.
I was trying to ask, are we required to have two ADA stalls?
So I think you're right, I think it is the two, or the ten percent.
Ten percent-ish, yeah.
So we could have one. We could, in other words, we could have up to ten spaces for regular cars, right?
There'd be eight, right, I think.
What you said.
There's seven, seven regular.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's a good question. It's actually a zoning code question, because the zoning code does specify how many spaces you need for different uses, but it doesn't specify park use in there and so, well, we didn't make the change yet. But anyway, the zoning code doesn't regulate it, so it, it would be up to folks like you to provide input on how many spaces you think are needed. Maybe this is too few, maybe it's too many. Hard to say.
And at some time, it probably would be too few and other times.
That's a great point, yeah.
But with the longer driveway, if they decide, or the city decided that they needed more parking, it could go this way as opposed to being blocked up by whatever's going on.
True. Well, one of the big drivers of parking is sports fields and I think we've all kind of shying away from sports fields in the area for a thousand reasons. And that should help the parking situation out a bit too.
Yeah, I think that the neighborhoods that are over here and the one right here, those actually have quite a few kids and young families that aren't necessarily involved in sports, but are gonna want to use the playground.
Sure, sure. Playground rates very high up there too.
I'm just kind of thinking that maybe we need more parking access than seven vehicles. Well, seven regular, two ADA, is that what we said there?
Yeah, two, two ADA and seven.
So, and if we bump up regular parking, does that forces to bump up ADA parking?
Oh, that's well.
So something, I could just, so north of me, I don't know if you've ever been out to Gibson, Gibson Hill Park.
Right.
When that park first went in, Albany had a fire station there and there was parking there associated with the station. They had some big fields that, you know, some of the soccer teams and stuff came out. But I would say before those larger areas were developed, the parking that was along, there was probably seven, about the number we're talking about right here. And I don't think they were ever filled and, and I mean, where it was, it was rare that you would see that. And there was no sidewalks along Gibson Hill at that point. So a lot of people came in and just would drive over there. They'd come in and park and they would park at the station on it. So this is when they were first opened, like in ninety-eight. Now today with the fields I know, I don't know if they're still doing that, I mean, but there's more parking out there at that facility. On a standard basis, for just using of the playground equipment and just coming in and doing stuff, I would say pro, you know, I, I think there was about eight. I'd have to look. There's more, but most, a lot of crews were there. I mean, they probably have double that available, but most of the time when we'd go, I'd be out there, it wasn't filled.
Well, I'm, there's a lot of walkers, like, I do, we're gonna do a lot of sports and walkers.
Yeah.
That's why everybody wants their dogs along.
Up and down that. I'm gonna keep a six fifteen on.
Doctor said, don't change your lifestyle, just let your lifestyle change itself.
Turnaround and stuff, is this, you, you, will you have to create something more down in, probably in this area and then maybe push that? Cause this is like sixty, if that's sixty feet, you, you're gonna wanna use that for, it's only usable for park access use other than parking.
Right.
In a, in a path, in a path, but.
Something that might be not, sorry.
I was just gonna say, the less, the, the more you go out this way, the less park, you're, you're taking away parks. So to me, you're gonna wanna put as much parking in respect to the homeowners in, in here, so that when you do have your turnaround or whatever you're gonna design, that it, it really is as minimal as possible, because everything else is then, you're gonna be parking.
Right, right. Just a parking lot, not a park.
But I, I wasn't sure how that turnaround would look like, what would be.
We'd have to analyze it with the auto turn, but you know, something that we could do is just kind of turn around that people can actually use maybe as a loading and unloading zone to access, you know, that increases, you know, accessibility to the picnic shelters and the playground and things like that. So it could serve kind of dual purpose.
So were you suggesting moving this closer to the line here?
That was just my suggestion, yeah. It is, is you, just that the sixty, I mean, sixty feet is, this is, the only use for the sixty feet is, in my opinion, I don't know for sure, but it would be parking. It's gonna be, you know, in a, in a pathway or a sidewalk, whatever. So we know that we have to put something like this in, whatever that is, a hammerhead or, I like, that looks nice. You know, you wanna make this as, less intrusive into the main body of the park. So by moving that back a little bit and just having that right in there is gonna be better. And then it gives, you know, but obviously, I like your comment, you've, you've got options to potentially add more parking at a day to day than we do.
You could, I mean.
Or if we didn't actually label it as parking, just ahead. Access to overflow and not really labeled.
Yeah, that's good. And even have this closer, oops, sorry.
No, that's good, that's good. Closer as opposed to the.
To the park, yeah. Although personally, it won't be too expensive.
No, I was gonna say, they're, even being above, they're probably gonna want some buffer area, I would imagine, so. So as far as picnic shelters, I've got a couple different varieties here. I've got one option that actually includes a restroom and a picnic shelter in the same structure. You can see there's quite a variety here. I mean, a sixteen by twenty-four is a pretty small size structure that can fit about two picnic tables. Thin foot long picnic tables. A little slightly larger one at thirty by thirty-four, you can get up to six.
I kinda like having, having combined, combined, that gives us more space for the humanities.
But if you put the rest area, the restroom area and picnic tables together, you have more chance of putting electrical plugins like we have. For people to use. That's my idea.
And this is a structure, right? You could still have a picnic table by itself.
Exactly.
Just one piece of information from our current park, if you're not aware, we ran out the shelter. It is rented out all year, every weekend, and if we build something like this, people, even if we don't run it out, groups will start using it. I would expect that, just because there's such a demand in the summer. So if people know it's there, they'll, they'll use it.
Considering for how many, how many people are there and how much parking.
And maybe there's, maybe we have two. Yeah, maybe there's one in a smaller, smaller one.
Then less people, then we still have some options for electrical space if there's really a lot of people.
Is this covered in summer?
Yes.
These, these guys are all covered.
Yes, this would be the restroom.
Right, right.
Structure and that includes enough room for a small utility chase, so any of the, you know, electrical panels, irrigation system, you know. And probably some room for storage like toilet paper and things like that.
But you're right, if you have a big structure like that, you may need more than your eight, ten parking spots.
It's great to have and the people really like it and use it a lot in here, so.
Yeah, I've used it.
And, you know, I, I've been over there on a weekend, to parties or whatever. There are a lot of parties there going on. Under the trees.
You mentioned trees, it probably bears mentioning, just real quickly, that there are two very large and beautiful oak trees on the property that probably can't remain. We desperately want them to, but they're not in very good shape. We're having an arborist give them a little bit closer look, but we had an AKS.
Christie looked at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We had AKS out there on the site and they said they're probably not safe to have kids running underneath. And so we hate, hate, hate to get them, but they're probably gonna have to go. Doesn't mean we can't plant forty more. They'll just take twenty years to grow.
Right, that's, that's the, yeah.
Yeah.
It does take a while.
Like the picnic area across the street in the cemetery. Lot of shade over there.
Yes.
That's the road.
And it's very quiet.
And it's a very quiet area.
So is there kind of consensus that we like the, kind of, I think that makes sense, like, I'm not sure if you mentioned it, but that way you have all your power and water and everything. You can even do a drinking fountain. I know that was one of the things that rated, rated really high. That can be right on the, on the structure itself, so.
They need to put locking rods on the toilet paper. The other day, it was all gone at the end of the park.
Oh, man.
Somebody went in and ripped it off.
Oh, really?
I told the guys, I, I talk to the guys over there every, you know, I get there late, you know, I see them at seven forty, or six forty-five, what, you know, when they go to work. Hey, you better check the heads.
We really saw that during COVID.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know, I, you know, they told me the story and it happened to me. Unfortunately, I would've been to an ambulance away, so I was better than they get on.
Now you always take.
Always take my black bag.
I think kind of going hand in hand with that, especially if we do like a turnaround area. Playground's always a really nice next to picnic shelter experience, like to sit under there, watch your kids play. Have a family picnic and the kids can go burn off some energy. So I got, you know, a couple of different ideas. This is kind of a more nature themed one and that's got quite, you know, that's got a lot of equipment on it. Here's some things with, see there would be two belt style swings, two toddler and then an inclusive kind of bucket seat in this one. So that's a pretty good sized swing. What are these little things right here? They're little, little spinners. Oh, okay. So kind of just a different motion, that are fun. This one's like a big donut.
Yeah.
This one, it has some like log steppers, it has a smaller swing on it, some climbers.
So we'd have to choose one or the other?
Well, I think when we get done with this, I'm gonna prepare a couple of options and we can give people the, you know, option on one and a different option on the other two. I mean, we're not necessarily trying to pick the specific equipment, I just wanted to give you an idea of kind of footprint.
So where we would want it is important.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Um, this one is a, so this was a little three, I think it was a three acre park that I did, but I just pulled as an example. So it has a climbing, kind of like climbing net, slide off of it, monkey bars and some stepper type equipment. So it's definitely much smaller, but I wanted to show, yeah, I wanted to show that you could, you know, if we didn't have tons of room or wanted to do something on the smaller side, that there were options that added a lot of play value to it. So trying to get.
So like this is one option and that is one option. Is it like, do you interchange things based on the number of space?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's kind of what this represents, is the, the use area of those acquired by the.
If you put those, if you put this stuff all together and you put it away from the water, is probably the, the better thing.
Oh, to keep the kids away from the water?
Yeah, if it, water comes up, you don't want the stuff underwater, you know, if it come up, and it could.
So is it gonna be a fence along the edge that goes on?
We're talking about that. We don't know yet.
There is a barbed wire, yeah?
We'll want something different than that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there is a barbed wire, yes.
Crawl under. Right, it's our GI Joe. I like the idea of a really, a lot of. Of the swing situation. Kitty swing, regular swing.
Slide.
They're always, they're always in use.
Yep, yep.
On a day I go home down Alexander that I don't see, pretty much eighty percent of the time, mom's. On a day I go home down Alexander that I don't see, pretty much eighty percent of the time, mom's got somebody over there and it's like.
It's classic. Would you recommend that those playgrounds, whatever is decided, somewhere probably in a closer proximity of their shelter? And as well as this activity, so somewhere probably, if it fits somewhere like that.
Probably as far away from the homes here as you can get, just because kids tend to be noisy.
If you did a nature theme, there's opportunity to incorporate that into whatever trail system, we do kind of continue that, that aesthetic and that.
If you put a, you know, a trail system around it, you could put something like this over here, you know. If you had a trail system, then people could come around, sit down, you know, and watch the ducks or whatever, you know, from the table there.
I kinda like the nature playground idea better because it is different.
And I had a, a few, uh, individuals, somewhere between five and ten. They, they asked for bocce ball. They, they really did, and they, they were, I played it myself. This one individual came from Oklahoma, well, we had it in Oklahoma, in the park, and it was always busy. We had tournaments, you know, and I compared the, the loudness of play of bocce ball compared to pickleball.
Right.
It's like Nike Day.
I also got cornhole, too, which they make concrete ones that can be left out.
Oh, really?
I actually used to set a park in Hillsboro. It's called Hidden Creek West, and, um, they kind of fashioned it as their big, um, inclusive playground, which is a community center. And so some of the things that they did there, obviously, were impacted because there was a community center right there. But one thing I noticed, that they provided not only a playground, but an area where like teens and things could hang out. They had concrete picnic, or, um, ping pong tables, they had cornhole. I don't know if they had a bocce ball court or not, but, and there were a lot of teens using it. So is there a way to break both of these into, into this park? Yeah, yes, yes.
You're the parks commissioner, you tell us.
Yes, yes, so, and as you can see here, we've got definitely some property, Steve's property here on this backside. But the majority of the park is relatively flat. We indicate some of this wetlands area to this backside where it's, where it's not.
The other thing I would just mention is if you see something that you think would be nice to have, that we don't have in our current park, could also look at, like, if you wanted to do the cornhole, you know, because you've got the, um.
Horseshoe pits.
Horseshoe pits, you know, we can do, you know, we could look at something like, we could look at maybe doing a, find a spot later. Separate discussion, but, you know, we could look at bocce if we think that that's something to put in.
In the main park. Our main park is not done by any stretch, and so if the parks commissioner thinks there's something else that's needed there, we can talk to the city council. Nobody plays horseshoes down there, eh, it's true. Kids like playing in the sand.
The other thing I would just, we, you know, a couple things to keep in mind, the property behind us, we've set aside for the school district.
Right, right.
And, uh, we've had discussions with the school district and the YMCA about potential sports builds and other things that are in the future. Uh, and we've had discussions where the current, where the temporary fire station was, the YMCA, as the industry comes in, is still interested in doing a facility there.
Still are.
There's, they still are, so, you know, this can all tie together then to our main park as well, so.
And it would be better, I'm sorry, would be better at bocce ball, um, in the main park, because there's more parking. You know, you'd probably attract more.
Have you ever been there on a baseball night?
There's no parking.
But having something for adults to do, when their children are playing.
If you go down the street behind us there.
Maybe cornhole is a better.
Everybody's parked on there, too.
Everybody, you can't get a fire truck and a car through.
I mean, similar to horseshoes, it's a little less loud, and it'd be easier for people to bring a couple.
And that's a nice surface around that, too.
Yeah, and they can be in the lawn, you could put them on a little concrete pad, so you could still mow easily around them. That's an option.
There's the monkeys from the park.
Yeah, I saw those. Yeah, so that's one of the fitness areas.
Oh, the wood monkey.
Yeah. What I wanted to show you, so they had a kind of a nature play element that had a sand table, which was kind of cool. So it doesn't have to be this traditional play equipment, it bubbled out of these and ran down kind of a little stream there, and it was really cool. I'm not saying we should do that here, but.
We don't have enough room.
Yeah. So that, that is an, an option.
Quick note, I would say, though, like the monkey here, um, one of the things we talked a lot about when we talked about this park early on with just staff, was that we didn't want, and it sounds backwards, we didn't want to make this park too awesome. Because we didn't want to make it an attractive for other people outside the community. You put something like this in there, people are gonna drive over from Portland to play around on something like that, so.
Yeah.
Maybe a bit more holy than something like a giant gorilla.
Like I said, that was, that alone was a million dollars, so.
Geez, well, that's one of the things we talked about with the splash pad, is that we agreed this splash pad's probably a bad idea because it's gonna draw everybody in from all over the place. And it didn't score very high anyway, so that's okay.
I was surprised at that.
Us, too.
Yeah, because Albany Parks, they're, you know, talking about how wonderful it's gonna be, on teeth with the splash pad.
So then would you put like benches, kind of spreadly, just around, like a pathway, the shot goes through? Yeah, once we get kind of a layout of where we generally like things, I'll work on connecting that, and, but yeah, definitely, um, you know, paths, I think in paved paths, but we could do, or your gravel or something, if you guys would like to do that instead. There may, if we want to access any of this area here, we may need to do a little bridge or boardwalk section. Yeah, and then we'd have benches, um. Probably like a dock, yes. This one has one, two, three, four, five racks. So on there, you'd get ten bikes, which is a lot. Normally, those are your high ac, you know, you want those next to your high use areas, so that probably would be somewhere in the central cluster as well.
Surfacing, that sort of stuff, so from a maintenance standpoint, just think about that stuff, too, like. Pavement is gonna be biggest upfront possible, but easier to maintain.
Yeah, gravel, we kicked out, millions a little more.
And the picture you showed had kind of like.
Yes, yes, it did. Okay.
Our park has.
Too many.
Too many, okay.
More areas of bark right in it right now than all these five largest parks combined.
Okay, okay.
We can work a plate, but the landscape.
So maybe. Yeah, and maybe we keep, what we do do up front more, so that, you know, we're providing some buffering, and it's also easier to be able to drive in and not have to.
But this strip right here is pretty much inaccessible.
Yeah.
Just bring it down.
Oh, my, oh. That's a fancy one. Something else that I wanted to talk about was surfacing in the playground, and, you know, there's several options, there's additional, like, the wood chips. There's rubber, whether that's tile or poured place rubber, or there's, um, synthetic plate turf. And I know that was one of the things that came out pretty high, was some of those inclusive features. So there's pros and cons to all those surfaces, um. Yeah, the chips are a lot more maintenance, they're the cheapest, um, but they're not very accessible either. So that's kind of the pros and cons of that. The rubber, um, had, you know, some people are concerned about rubber products. It's, I call it a coldy wax product because sometimes, you have to have just the right weather, it can't be too wet, can't be too dry, can't be too cold, can't be too hot type of thing. Um, the turf is, um, rubber also can get kind of hot, in my opinion. Turf also can be warm, but I don't feel like it has a potential to concern you. It depends a lot on. Well, partially that, I, I would say it was comparable to re- rubber, so you probably, if you were maintaining it, get twenty years out of it, so. Yeah, and that's my personal favorite, just because it's more accessible, I like the look of it, but, you know, it's definitely more expensive. It's probably around, I would say, around twenty to twenty-three dollars a square foot installed versus your wood chips, which are. It has to be, those have to be placed every year, every other year. Yeah, and they don't, they don't take the weather very well, it gets really sloppy and.
What's the expense of the rubber?
It's about the, about the same.
As ratchips?
No, as the turf, yeah. So advantage to the tiles or, um, poured places, you can do some sort of pattern if you wanted to, which is kind of cool. You can also combine different, um, surfaces, too. So if you want to have an area for, you know, like four square or something like that, you could do that. Yeah.
Yeah, I like the rubber, from my experience with rubbers.
The advantage of the tiles is that one is damaged, you can pop it out, so.
That's why I like the tiles.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we leaning more towards just tiles, or we can provide different, you know, maybe one concept has tiles, one has turf, or combination, or ratchips?
I just have options.
I think if we're gonna do something with the rubber tiles, maybe we do, we stick with that rubber. Deal, since we already have ratchips at the other. Yeah, ratchips at the other.
Yeah.
It's great. Both of the parks.
All right, rubber it is. All right, what else we got on here? We like cornhole, and second picnic shelter. Especially if this one's gonna be rented out and having.
We don't want to rent, if we can avoid it.
Oh, you're not gonna make this.
Logistically, it's not very much fun to do.
It would, it would turn into.
So, I mean, we could have a limited number of people, but, um, when we're renting out, we're getting groups of hundred to two hundred. Fifty, sometimes smaller groups, but I don't think we want to.
No, no.
No, without the parking, so you have nothing too big.
We don't want to encourage.
She's showing four tables on there, that's probably about right.
But having additional ones set aside for smaller families. Yeah, especially if someone, a big family takes over, one of them, a home, you know, it's for.
Probably covered as well, I'm guessing.
Right. So we could do something, I'm sorry, didn't hear.
I was just gonna say, you'll have people showing up at nine AM when the pilot calls.
And there's only one rental a day, which is. All our day, yep. And most of the time, we tell people if they get, if they're free to scoot in and take it over. That can stay in the main park.
Would they just be at the gardening areas?
Or is it covered in the curry, around the playgrounds?
Light can be closed most of the time in the dark, um, so a lot of lighting. So around the restrooms, and if there's a trail, maybe follow the lighting, but that gets pretty expensive pretty fast.
We could do just like a photo cell, like a, a motion sensor or dawn to dusk type security lighting, if you wanted, in that structure. I don't feel like the whole park, especially if it's really closed, needs to be. But we get, there's lighting like over in Sun River, where they make the lighting so it stays kind of down. Um, that, that way it doesn't, it doesn't bother the neighbors. If you do have lighting, you know, pathways and whatnot, then it wouldn't be as.
But lights will attract people.
But the mosquitoes are gonna be there anyways, it's creepy.
Are you anticipating a problem with mosquitoes in the area they're creating?
Disgusting.
Did you say that there is an idea, or is it just sort of sliding around?
Uh, uh, that was kind of an idea, but it's not, not living there. I was just thinking that might be a nice opportunity for that corner to have, is this, yes, something, yeah. Right, and we could, sorry. I, I was gonna say, we could maybe enhance some of this wetland area, so maybe there's some educational component or something, but that might be kind of a nice vista, I guess is what I was seeing.
I like your idea of a little bridge over there.
There's not water, optimism, there's not water, there's only water there two months out of the time.
There's not a whole lot of water in the main creek.
The blue that you're seeing there is related perception, because that's the hundred year flood event. So normally, this, where you see, where you see the blue and where you see the wetland channel is probably, the blue should be on the.
Yes, and this is just what was available on GIS, so they don't always mesh up.
So this drainage through here is, it's really just a little bit of water that's coming around it, and it's wetlands because it doesn't slope very much if the water sits there.
But the drainage down towards the creek is a fairly, I mean, you're gonna have to have something to cross it because it is very.
But if we may, if there was a pathway that went, we could keep it on this side of the potential creek, or potential wetland area.
They want a path on the other side just for ability to get back to there and keep it mowed and stuff, we're gonna get back to it with the mower anyway.
So like a bridge on this, on this.
So you guys have a preference for like asphalt or concrete or?
The trails?
Yes.
Most of my other paths are asphalt, and we're not talking about sidewalks. Partly because it's less expensive usually, um, but also it's a little softer surface for running on, walking on. It's not as soft as wood chip path or something, which, I, I didn't bring up the path surfacing to say we shouldn't do anything like that, it's just something we want to keep in mind. Uh, but the paved paths tend to be nice for families and strollers.
Well, that was some of the higher ranging things, too. I definitely agree. I probably would recommend, you know, concrete right around like this hub, and then some of the more perimeter trails. And asphalt. That would encourage people to use the more nature and natural areas.
I'd be nice to have like a very cohesive path, too, that's like circles, because the one at our, at the big heart is a little bit like. Like on a stroller, or, you know, wheelchair, there's.
Exactly, and we could put like, I mean, it's not gonna, we have to try a few loops probably. Exactly, and we could put like, I mean, it's not gonna, we have to probably do loops to probably get a significant amount of.
Distance.
Right.
Park was jogging. It can be jogged, but.
And where is the cornhole, is that there or?
They could be somewhere.
My air for the shelter?
Yeah.
Well, let us know if you have a preference.
Yeah. Do something like that.
And it will be more noisy with the holes around.
Yes, but definitely less noisy than horseshoes.
And the noise would not be from the sport or.
I mean, this is kind of flattering, I do think, um, it's not something that we've really talked about too much, but I think it's good to have lawn areas there just for people to throw a bisbee around or play, you know.
But not so that it's not a field.
Exactly.
And then you said, along the pathway, there'd be like benches here and there.
Probably like, uh, like the big Spencer, probably a good thing to have in a few locations. Kind of trying to think.
If you put a bridge over this, it seems like it makes sense that, you got some elevation here too, it'd be nice to see like at least a bench or a.
A little overture or something.
Well, I'd see in the future, the potential could be that pathway.
You bet, you bet.
So having, you know, this or.
Maybe that works over there.
Or at least a landing for maybe a picnic table. Sure. But it's just not. I mean, if you got access, people are gonna wanna go over there, so it seems like, you know.
Give them a reason.
Yeah. Exactly.
It might be, if we're putting a, just a picnic table on a pad, great, if you're putting a shelter, you probably are thinking you want power and that's gonna be.
I don't know that we necessarily, do you think we'd need power for that?
Maybe not, but people sometimes.
Not to have that there.
Power means music, music means noise. It makes sense that we would have power there.
Yeah.
But picnic table or, you know, or a shelter.
Yeah.
Some sort of bridge across.
One of the portable tables even could sit on a pad there.
Yeah, and then if it gets really heavy with water and. Hold on.
The other side of the ridge.
So we're not gonna have a pass on this side.
Not necessarily.
Maybe, maybe some benches down.
Yeah, so maybe that parrot. We'll play around with it, make it literally nice, but.
Maybe a low fence.
Cause I think there is going to be somewhere near, I mean, probably on this side, right?
This is a kind of.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Trail connection.
Black line, black line and chain.
Yeah, the plastic.
It would have to. Our property was well outside of the flood plain, so I don't think that we're gonna see water. Except at the crossing.
I thought it was probably.
Yeah.
And there'll probably be fewer people out during the wettest time of the year too, so.
Yeah. And if there's water in that little finger there, it will have backed up from the creek and just be sitting there, it won't be flowing because there's no flow of water to there.
That creek moves a lot of water really quick, so it will have a rain for two weeks, it's out after three days and then.
Some of that.
Yes.
This creek.
Yes, that creek, it gets all the way, but then five minutes, rather than three days, it's, it seems bad.
While you're drawing, Kirsty, you might wanna draw a fence line along the, uh.
This side?
Eastern edge, eastern, eastern edge.
Yes.
As well. Maybe a four foot fence just to keep kids out.
Same hot wire? I did a hot wire.
Are you taking like? Five foot, four foot, cyclone.
Kevin was just saying something like, uh, the chain link, but.
Yeah.
Vinyl, yeah. Vinyl coated black chain link.
Yeah.
That's what we've got around the detention basins, we've got one right up in that corner, right, looks like that, it's not the prettiest.
But it's not the ugliest either.
Yeah, I'd keep it low. They'll jump over, they'll jump over. They huff our four foot hug wire fence, they huff it.
That'll help keep some dogs and things out of that area.
Put some trees in there that will attract the deer.
You have to keep the apples or something, huh?
Probably can like this cluster.
I don't think that'll be hard.
What's in there, I'm sorry?
Just the deer, the deer always there.
Okay.
But with those trees.
So there's a, well, it's a cluster of horns right now that they hang out at.
Oh.
Not under the tree, the first one like right next to our rock line. And now, those are outside the park property.
These ones, this one here.
What he was talking about.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Blackberries and stuff.
Yes.
Oh, the ones on the, who were the? The ones like on your guys' side.
Yeah.
Turns it right in there. So, just way it's off of us.
Right, right along that fence line, right? That existing fence line, there's blackberries right all along there.
This little cluster.
Oh, that little.
This little cluster.
Gotcha.
Oh, fun little stick up. They like to, they like to hang out there. They, their ponds have been in there.
Is there?
Yeah. Nothing else is out there, so. And they go to the creek all day long.
The cougars aren't in there this year.
Three cats are always up there.
There are cougars all the way down here.
Oh, yeah.
In the back.
In the back, we haven't heard anything about this year.
Does, is this gonna like then loop?
Yes, yeah, and probably, you know, I'd go around. Yes, exactly. We might even, you know, want to connect here too.
Yeah.
But we can still have some, some open space.
Yeah, this, so this could be a nice lawn area here. Clean edges.
Is it still no dogs, uh, off leash, right?
Right, was it dog park ever? Do you mean lawsuits? Our survey said it sounded pet friendly.
I think it was lower.
Yeah, right there.
It's just surprising because everybody's walking the dogs.
I was surprised by.
Oh, yeah.
And we will include like the. Big sizes, so.
Even the.
Be out friendly.
Yes, for friendly dogs.
Another thing you need is providing there too is doggy bag.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, ser, yeah. We're no stranger to those. Yeah, those are all our truck parks.
This would be a longer walk for you to go to the park.
No, no way. I'll stick with my park.
Okay. We're gonna make this so fabulous, you're gonna wanna come here.
Brand opening, yeah.
So what kind of timeframe are you thinking?
It'll all depend on grants and.
Correct.
And funding, so, you know, as we see industrial, you know, as we see our sus values raise, that will help a lot. So as you see, industrial development step down.
Everything good comes from industry, that's the message we're trying to convey.
Well, that will help, definitely would, would move things along much faster.
And I think Kirsty mentioned at the beginning, um, but I don't know that people know what SCORP means.
Okay. So that's the, uh, the statewide outdoor recreation plan, so they do that every five years, I believe. And like I said, they're coming, the next one comes out in twenty twenty-four, but, um, so some of the challenges that they are, are saying faces some of the Oregon recreation areas is aging population, um, which I think we can say we're providing easy access, paved trails, that sort of thing. Um.
And activities.
Yes, exactly, exactly, the cornhole, another, like, uh-huh, exactly. And I'm saying that a lot too is, you know, after COVID, it seemed like grandparents are oftentimes some of the primary contributors. So it's nice to have activities that they can participate into. Um, uh, diverse population, um, youth engagement, outdoor recreation, um, serving low income population and then health benefits of physical activity.
Now, you might say, why do we care about being consistent with SCORP? Well, first off, this grant that's providing her has to be consistent with SCORP, just to start with. And secondly, any other grant opportunities we can reach out for to build this park will have to be consistent with SCORP. So we need to keep our eye on that ball all the time. Oh, no, I think it does, I think what we've got going here is very consistent. It shouldn't be too difficult to get grant funding for this, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get enough grant funding to build the whole darn thing, but some grant funds will be easy to get for this. Yeah, for certain.
What's the estimate on?
What would the cost? We're not sure, we don't know, uh, which features are gonna be in there yet, um.
Well, just give me a round figure.
That's you, not me.
Yeah, I mean, I, honestly, you could probably be in a three million, I think, to do everything. These shelters, you know, like this, probably, you know, twenty-five to thirty thousand, once it's all sudden constructed. Um, playground equipment, you know, no, it's not, I mean, you could spend a hundred fifty thousand there really easily.
Or a billion dollars on a monkey.
A million dollars on a monkey.
We're not that lucky. Don't look for it, it's built.
I mean.
To say.
Another thing that isn't part of like making decisions on what nice things to do, but everything's gonna need drainage.
Yep.
Like we see at our current park, if we don't have drainage in all of it, that's, makes some of it not very usable during times of year and irrigation.
And parking's expensive too.
Parking, yeah.
But we assume we're gonna want irrigation, if we want a nice lawn area, we're gonna have to water it, so those two pieces add a lot.
Yes, and even the planting areas, which I know we've said that we're not gonna do too much of, but, you know.
Well, we want lots of trees, I just love lawn.
Right.
Trees, shrubs, trees.
Shrubs, yeah.
No flowers.
Okay.
Just trees. I'll go eat deer food.
I think you can have something at an entry point where you have a small.
I have an idea about apples.
Maybe it will, they will hate you for that.
Something we haven't shown is, um, we probably need an entry sign somewhere, didn't we? Like a, so people know, hey, this is the park, because you don't have a lot of frontage, so.
Right, right, hard to see.
Well, now, do I understand you saying that we'll put bocce ball over the, over the park?
Why?
Or in this park?
I don't think that's off the table.
Yeah, it's great, yeah.
Still possible in this.
Yeah, we could do one concept with it and one.
I, I, I know that it would be, that you know, somebody assist them if people.
Alright. Is there space?
Six, six.
Oh, yeah, I mean. I think we could.
Maybe next to a trail or something.
Oh, yeah, that's something.
At least one or maybe two.
What, what's that?
Bocce ball.
What kind of surface?
Bocce ball, it's not sand, is it?
Some granite, first granite.
Or there's synthetic turf or like a decomposed granite.
Synthetic turf.
Or racer shells, that'd be really fancy.
I don't think we want to be really fancy.
So how, how much, how much can they give the grant?
Artificial turf.
Any chance at all?
At all.
So the grant is just for the master planning process, not the elements, to build it out?
Yeah, this grant will, will provide a, a concept design, not a specific construction level design, just concept level, and we're going to get to the planning commission and have the planning commission approve it as a site design review, which will then lock it in, doesn't mean we can't little stuff five feet here, five feet there, but it means we can't add four more picnic shelters afterwards. So what we decide is gonna have to be slightly locked down as we move forward to the next phase, which would be, uh, construction documents. So I can tell you a lot more about that, but it goes in thirty percent.
But I think the point with this grant is, we have to do this concept first, right? And then we can use that to go get more grant funding hopefully and.
So we're gonna take something like this to the planning commission for a final approval, but the grant required it, so we kinda have to.
And we may wanna, you know, you said shelters, only this many shelters, I mean, if the approval can be broad enough that we can do anything that we might wanna do with public park, that might be a good idea. I sure wouldn't wanna be tied down to that in our current park.
Yeah.
Say we gotta go back to planning if we wanna change something in our.
Well, most person wants to go through planning.
I know.
Stays making it.
Would you comment here signage or?
Yes.
And then the gate would be somewhere up here or whatever, past.
Yes, past there.
You're fucking me over now.
And so that role transition for driveways, that's something you will work on or?
Will work on it with them.
Yeah.
The gate needs to be as close to the street as you can so people won't pull in and.
Yeah, it depends on the driveway configurations, which are still in the air.
You gotta figure that one out because you can't, like you said, they're gonna pull up there and go out there and go walking, you know, or whatever, and then they're gonna block his driveway, his access, so it's gotta be really looked at closely. Because if you look at the big park, the gate is at the sidewalk within, what, eight feet of it? So people cannot come in.
Right, that's a big point.
We'll just give you a remote.
And you have your own mini.
Put an electric gate there, you push your little button and then open that.
I know, you don't like, we don't like landscaping, but if we landscape the side over here.
Well, that's, that's what I said, I think.
That's a good spot for it, yeah.
Yeah, we just want to elevate it.
We're making our host.
Sounds good.
We could.
So the timeline for this could be a couple of years.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Darn it.
Certainly, if things went lightning fast, it'd be a couple of years, yeah, that would take a miracle.
If we had all the money today and we were moving to design and construction, it'd be a couple of years before.
Right, right.
You're probably looking.
It gotta start somewhere though.
I know.
And that's what we're starting.
By then we might have a trail over here and we could just cook it.
You never know. Might be.
Trail might be easier to, to design and.
That trail's gonna be tough, and people who love the trail, people who really, really hate it, so it's gonna be tough.
And it's all true private, I think, not all, this section.
We have to acquire land, that's not easy. It's gonna be a long process, that's why it's not behind my list.
Do any more of these people that live along here need to, uh, put in?
I don't know, uh, there's.
Well, probably here, now that they see what the one neighbor is doing, if they are.
Right.
We'll probably hear about it in the next.
There's a retaining wall on this property, um, that's a big concrete block, some other people have some wood retaining walls, it's all different along there. It's not uniform at all.
So are you gonna put like trees and such to kind of, as a boundary?
That's our idea, yeah, is to try and screen that as much as we can, yeah.
They're elevated, so a tree would be perfect for it. Or fish hold it, so, or in a different.
Usually guys put trees over retaining walls.
It, it gets a little tricky because you don't wanna make it so that people can hide behind it. I mean, we always want a police officer to be able to pull in here and see the whole park, and so. Trees, yes, but with, up a little bit, so you can't hide behind it. Yeah.
Yes, I have to say, this is the most fun I've had at a park's boundary meeting. Well, thank you all for.
You're the best advice we've seen.
Well, true, there's a couple more things on the agenda.
Why don't you take a quick picture?
No, I did this real quick so we can finish off the agenda, that'd be great.
I'm retired, I'm retired.
Be nice.
More agenda.
Oh, we have agenda stuff?
Whatever Matt got.
Oh, we're stuck on.
Just two, just two, we just gotta close it out. We gotta keep the meeting for a whole ass long. So you'd be on G.
Oh, yes, so I, I was looking at last, okay, closing commission comment. Is that me?
Well, it's everybody, if any commissioner had a closing, uh, comment they wanted to make on, except for.
I'd just say, this is very encouraging, very impressive, thank you.
Yeah.
And I, I like the opportunity of being able to offer a lot of info.
Great. Okay, well, I guess you move on to H.
Adjournment, well, I have to say, five minutes later than everyone. It was on my calendar, uh, that I look at every day, but, uh, and I thought about it earlier. Well, you know, hey, I'm gonna change my clothes and, I don't know. Sorry about that.
Your clothes are by.
Well, thanks. It's a nice guy. Yeah, okay, but anyway, okay, well, thank you, and, you know, I thought the card was great.
I think Matt deserves the credit for designing the card.
Yeah. And I did have people in the neighborhood that knew I was on the card.
That's great.